Ladies and gentlemen, good evening and welcome to the December 11th, 2023 regularly scheduled meeting of the Rockingham County Planning Board and Board of Adjustment. Let the record show that there's a quorum present tonight. At this time, the Chair calls upon Corey Scott for our invocation.
Father in heaven, we're grateful for the rain that we've received. We're grateful that we can meet in this County Planning Board, and we're grateful for the opportunity for this board to serve the community, and grateful for the interest that the community has in the proceedings that we pursue. We pray that we might have the wisdom that we need to review and appropriately adjudicate these cases that we have before us, that we might know what would be the best interest of both the county and the citizens, and according to thy will, bless us now, this Christmas season, to be of good cheer. And we pray for these blessings in the name of our Savior, in whose birth we celebrate. Amen.
The next item on our agenda is adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we adopt the agenda as written.
Second. No discussion. A motion has been made and seconded to adopt the agenda. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. I have to lean back to see around the Christmas tree. The vote's unanimous, and the agenda is adopted. The next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes for the November 13th meeting.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve the minutes for the November 13th, 2023 meeting as written.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the minutes of the November 13th, 2023 meeting. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, like sign. There's no opposition, so the minutes are approved. If there's no objection, we're going to convene now as the Board of Adjustment. I understand there's a request to continue this meeting until our January 8th meeting.
Good evening, everyone. There is, our county attorney had planned to be here, which is usually the case for any quasi judicial proceeding other than a special use permit. However, he has to attend the funeral of a death in the family. So staff is strongly suggesting that we reschedule this case for our January 8th, 2024 hearing.
Okay.
Do we need a motion?
Before we get to that, is the applicant here?
He is, and we've discussed that. If you'd like to speak to him, he can come up.
From here, are you in favor, sir, of doing this? Continuing it? Okay. Then I don't think we need a motion. We can just go ahead and continue it.
Paul, for the record, can you state that we're going to continue for the actual date? That'll prevent the notice requirements.
Okay, what is it, January 8th?
Yes, sir.
Okay, then we'll continue this until January 8th.
Thank you.
That being said, we'll adjourn, unless there's any objections. We're going to adjourn the Board of Adjustment and reconvene as the Planning Board. As you know, the Planning Board deals with zoning map changes. Zoning map changes reviewed by the Planning Board are legislative matters. These map changes are reviewed for reasonableness and consistency with North Carolina General Statute 160D, the county's 2021 land use plan, and Unified Development Ordinance, among other plans. When making a decision, we consider recommendations of the planning staff and public comments. When applicable, this board reviews potential land uses requested by the applicant. Planning Board decisions are forwarded to the Board of Commissioners as recommendations. The Board of Commissioners will hold a public meeting before making a final decision whether to approve or deny a zoning map change recommended by this Planning Board. A zoning map change is the first in a series of reviews and approvals that move a project forward. The Technical Review Committee reviews the site plans and technical items related to, but not limited to, later development approvals, including transportation concerns, environmental issues, and county services. The TRC is comprised of professional staff and other agency members, such as the North Carolina Department of Transportation, county schools, emergency services, and the North Carolina Division of Environmental Quality. Each case on the agenda requesting a zoning map change will be presented to the Planning Board by a member of the planning staff. Following the staff presentation, the case applicant will be given the opportunity to brief the board regarding the case. Following the applicant's presentation, the Planning Board will provide a public comment period. All persons who would like to speak during the public comment period regarding any rezoning case being heard by the Planning Board must sign the case file roster located at the entrance of these chambers prior to the beginning of the meeting. The public comment period is not a forum for a dialogue or debate with the Planning Board. The express purpose of the public comment period is for the Planning Board to receive additional facts, comments, and opinion regarding a request to change the zoning map. The chairperson will open the public comment period. Speakers will be called in the order in which they sign up. The chairperson reserves the right to set time limits for each speaker. In the event time limits are imposed, the speaker may yield his time to another speaker. However, no speaker will be permitted to exceed twice the time limit imposed. No speakers are allowed to address the Planning Board twice during the public comment period. When recognized, each person signed up to speak will do so in a civil manner from the podium. Before beginning to speak, the chairperson will ask that you provide your name and address for the record. Unless otherwise directed, all testimony, evidence, or comments shall be directed to the Planning Board, not to staff or the audience. If you agree with an argument for or against a request to change the zoning map already presented by another speaker, please practice the courtesy of indicating as much when you're called to speak. Comments or outbursts from the audience are not permitted. After all speakers have been heard, the chairperson will close the public comment period. The applicant will then be given the opportunity for rebuttal. This will be followed by board discussion, motions, and voting. That being said, we will now call upon staff to introduce our case 2023-21.
Again, let me get this set up here. So here we are considering case 2023-21. It's a specific request to rezone a parcel of land that is currently duly zoned, neighborhood commercial and residential agricultural. The request is to zone the entire parcel, neighborhood commercial. It's located at 4698 Ellisboro Road. This is a conventional slash straight rezoning. A little history, this property had been zoned residential/agricultural pretty much since the time that the first zoning districts were laid out. In 2018, an approximate two acre portion of the frontage of what the parcel looked like at that time was rezoned from RA to neighborhood commercial, and has been used for those purposes since. Since then, there's also been a subdivision of the land a little bit, which results in the map looking like it does now. I'll jump forward a little bit. Here's our vicinity map. It's in the very southwestern corner of the county. And here's our zoning map. As you can see, the subject parcel is slashed in red or pink, and there's that little extra bit of neighborhood commercial on the adjoining property. The parcel layout used to include that portion, but even though the property lines changed, that zoning area still applies to that little district. That's why it looks a little odd. However, that area of the district is not part of this request. Does that make sense? The part that now falls outside of the parcel is not involved in the remainder of this request. Okay, as long as you guys agree. Briefly, as you can see, here's the zoning map. It's located on Ellisboro Road. It's primarily surrounded by residential, residential protected and residential agricultural. It's in the G2 land class bubble on the southwest corner of the county. G2 is specifically meant for neighborhood scaled commercial development to serve the needs of the nearby neighborhoods and low to medium residential housing. Unlike G1, there is not a direct as suggestion that commercial needs to be located at strategic intersections that we've identified in G1. It's a little bit looser in G2. This first portion was, like I said, zoned in 2018, and the request to zone the remainder, which is about, this is a tax map estimate, of about 1.9 additional acres. This is a parcel overhead snapshot. Can you guys see that pretty well? I just outlined it. So you can see the front where it's being used right now for outdoor storage of campers, RVs, marine craft, and things like that, which is approved, which is an approved use in the neighborhood commercial district. By the way, in your printed packets, there's a complete list of all the uses in residential agricultural and in neighborhood commercial. The owners are Secure Storage LLC. It's actually two persons, and I believe at least one is here tonight to just address the board about their desires for the parcel. You will note the survey I included in the packet was to demonstrate how that land division happened that resulted in that extra sliver of neighborhood commercial zoning. Overall, when you examine the objective factors from a planning standpoint, the tract itself exceeds the minimum lot size for neighborhood commercial, which is 20,000 square feet. It is in the G2 land class, which supports neighborhood scale commercial development. Even though Ellisboro Road is not a highway, it is a significant travelway in the southwest portion of the county. This will allow all uses in the neighborhood commercial zoning districts similar to those uses are already allowed on the frontage portion of the parcel. There are some benefits and potential destrimates to weigh here. Although a portion of this parcel is currently zoned neighborhood commercial, the parent property is otherwise is surrounded by residential zoning districts on all sides, thus staff recommends judicious planning and adherence to development standards in aiding to smooth the transition to residential uses in the area. Given that recommendation, if there are any questions about any of the uses in neighborhood commercial or residential agricultural, I'll be happy to answer those or any other questions you might have.
Could you go back to the original hatched map that you showed us? That one right there. Now, the, all right, just to the north of the blue hatch section is a blue area with no hatching in it.
Right.
Is that part of this request? Because it looks like there's a road that goes down that alleyway.
You are correct. That is not part of this request. That is a leftover from the 2018 rezoning that resulted once the land was subdivided after it had been rezoned. That is actually the driveway entrance for that larger parcel in the back. It's essentially a 50-foot access strip to Ellisboro, which is a state maintained road.
Okay, and just to be clear, we're only considering changing the map for the section that doesn't have, it's hatched, but it doesn't have the blue in it.
Correct, correct. As you look at this parcel map and where the hatching is, you'll see there's some hatching over the blue area to the front. That's neighborhood commercial. The line is not, it's not a survey line, but it's approximate. The remainder portion on the eastern part of the parcel, the rear, so to speak, that's the part that's about 1.9 acres that is involved in this request.
Any questions for Mr. Cochrane?
Lynn, did emails, phone calls?
We had about three inquiries. We didn't have anyone that either called, we had two emails and one phone call. No one called with particularly strong feelings either way. There were generally just questions about, okay, is this the parcel where the boat storage is kind of things? Like, yes, they just want to enlarge that use a little bit, and maybe some other things in neighborhood commercial.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Cochrane? If not, we'll hear from the applicant. Is Todd Kundoff here?
Yeah, I'm not actually there. I mean, I guess I haven't signed up. Can y'all give us a little bit more information? I mean, obviously not being as educated as most of you in the room, not understand a lot of this. We actually live, Randy and his wife and I, we own the property right behind it. We just had some concerns of what would be done with this property. Is the intentions to expand the boat storage? Is there any intentions to do a neighborhood or anything like that, or add hoses or houses?
Hold on one second. I may have made a mistake here by calling your name. You're not the applicant.
No, sir. I signed up at the sheet, just if I needed to speak, if I wanted to object.
Okay, we need to hear from the applicant first.
Mrs. Algren, there you are. You're hiding in the back. I didn't see you. Thanks for coming up.
I apologize, sir. We'll get to you shortly.
Well, to answer your question, there will be no housing. It's, yeah, it's just the boat and RV storage getting expanded.
You need to state your name and address, please.
Samantha Algren, and where I live. Okay, that's 9908 NC Highway 704 in Madison, North Carolina.
And what you want the Planning Board to know is it's just strictly for expansion of your business?
Right. That first acre, we're just going to finish off what's fenced in to continue that boat and RV storage.
Any questions?
I have a question. Ms. Algren, you're going to expand the current, your current business that's there. About, and this is a RV boat storage facility. Can you anticipate about how many boats and RVs would be on the property total?
It is kind of hard to say at this point. It's not been mapped out exactly. We're still kind of leveling the land out. If I had to guess, I would say 70, 70 to 80 spots.
I have a question. What current utilities is on any of this property? Anything?
It's just basically parking.
Hour, no water, no nothing?
No. Well, there was power with the previous owner, but we're changing that to where we don't provide that.
So you don't offer no, any kind of?
No.
Climate control or nothing?
No.
Everything is just exposed, pretty much?
Yeah, we do currently have a completely closed-in building, and one lean to. But yeah, that's what we have right now.
I've noticed you put some fencing around and stuff like that. Are you planning to increase that? You know, some of the neighbors might think, well, you know, we're going to be looking at RVs at our backyard.
Right, yeah. We are going to be putting up another fence on our side of the private road. So yeah, that should definitely close that in.
Is that just on the road, or is that on both sides toward the other part?
There's already fencing along the road and down the right side, and the backside. So we're just going to put it down that last side.
Will that be a fence with slats, blinders on the roadside?
It's actually going to be vinyl, is that what that's called? The chain link.
Just for the board, as a reminder, since this will be rezoned to neighborhood commercial, it will be subject to all the development standards for nonresidential uses, which includes fencing and more landscaping and several other things.
Lynn, remind me, can we make conditions on, just like we've done before, on height width of vegetation or height width of landscaping around?
Not in this case. It's a straight rezoning. It's a straight rezoning, yeah. If you, the exact standard for nonresidential development is what's called a parcel perimeter buffer, which requires a 15-foot minimum, 15-foot wide buffer consisting primarily of evergreens, with some other rules about how you can mix in different types of plantings. Either that or a, I believe, three to six feet earthen berm with plantings to reach mature height of 12 feet. And the mature height of the standard landscape barrier is to reach 20 feet. They have to be six feet within three to five years.
So 20 feet, about 12 feet, did you say? Why?
Either if it's on a berm, 12 feet, or if it's just simply straight planting in a 15-foot width row, it's just straight planting.
Width, yes, 15-foot width. Okay.
Any other questions for Ms. Algren? Okay, thank you very much. And now, the public comment period is open, and Mr. Kundoff, I apologize for calling you out of order, but you're welcome to come up and speak your piece.
I think we're good.
I'm sorry?
I think we're all right. I'm only concerned with the.
Okay, how about Judy and Sue Kirsch? For the record, please state your name and address.
My name is Joe Kirsch. Address is 110 Mustang Run, Stokesdale.
And what is it you'd like the Planning Board to know?
Well, we're concerned about the water as well. And now that you brought up the fence, is that going to be the same type of fence that's on the front? Because if you look at the fencing that's inside Saddle Bed Group that they said they wanted to have, it's the wooden fence. It looks like a stockyard someplace when it's not maintained. And the fence across their property on the front of Ellisboro Road, that's not exactly in the greatest shape either. It's not painted. Any other concern that we had, is there going to be a traffic light involved? Because there's plenty of traffic on Ellisboro Road, and none of it does a speed limit, which is already 50 miles an hour.
Okay, one question for DOT, isn't it?
Yeah, the traffic lights, DOT.
We'll have the applicant address that issue and rebuttal that, sir.
Thank you.
There's no other speaker signed up, so public comment period is now closed. Ms. Algren, if you could return to the podium, please. And this is your opportunity for rebuttal to the gentleman's remarks and questions.
We are planning on...
Please address the board, not the individual.
Oh, okay, sorry. Yeah, we are planning on painting that fence, and I'm sorry, what was the other question?
You can't answer that question. It's the traffic light. You don't have any control over that.
Oh, okay.
That's a DOT.
The wooden fence that's up front is going to stay that way. We're just going to paint it, the vinyl fence or whatever that was called. The chain link is going to go down the side.
I did have one, is there hours operation?
It's 24 hours.
Yeah.
Right. And there will be security cameras.
Is it gated, or is it gated? It's not gated?
It is gated, yes. And, yeah, so, and it's going to be lit. We're going to have lights up, security cameras.
So you will have power? You will put lights?
You will have, right. But yeah, that's not for the customers to have.
Right, just night.
And Mr. Chair, just to confirm, when we change the zoning, if we pass this request or approve this request, this changes the requirements for buffer. Lynn, am I correct about that?
Yes, you are correct.
It'll change it on the expanded part, not the full?
Not the original part.
Not the original part, but any new additions would have to comply with our current regulations.
Got it. Okay, so that from the section all the way back around those, the 20 by 15 vegetative buffer will be in effect?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
It would be, just for argument's sake, for everyone's knowledge, it would be perimeter buffer like Lynn said, so it'll go all the way up the northern boundary line, the eastern boundary line, and then all the way down the southern boundary line. Their fence would be existed on the outside of it or the inside of it, but they still have to have that 15-foot staggered depth for the landscaping. All lighting would still also have to comply with our current regulations, which is all shielded and onto property, not, you know, it's not allowed to flood onto other properties.
So would the lighting change if she's described that there will be lights and security cameras there? That will actually impact the original parcel?
Yeah, if they change that lighting there or put lighting there, anything they add today has to comply with today's ordinances.
And we won't be changing anything on the original lot? It's just going to be, we're going to add some in the back part.
Okay, so you won't be adding lighting to the original parcel?
Right, yeah, it's just to what we're rezoning.
Okay.
But if they did, there would still have to comply with today's rules.
Got it. Okay, all right, thank you.
The property is cleared now? Is it cleared?
We are actually in the middle of, there was some piles that had trash that had gotten grown over, so we're kind of digging into those. We've already got the silt fencing up.
Is it going to be gravelled or?
It's going to be gravelled, yeah.
There is one thing I'd like to call the board's attention to. If you look at the parcel map, which is the overhead GIS photograph, if you note the junction with Ellisboro, there was a commercial driveway entrance installed at the requirement of NC DOT for the 2018 rezoning. So that exists there. If another is required from DOT, then that's part of some, we'd have to find out if one is required or not required, so to slightly address the transportation issue.
So they may, but the driveway is separate, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so, oh, so, and the driveway is down, I see it, the entrance is down that driveway. So DOT might require that they have that, the concrete?
Yes, for any commercial development, we require that DOT at least investigate to see if a commercial driveway permit will be required for the proposed activity. If so, then we require its installation.
Even though that looks like the original parcel that's in C?
It looks like the original driveway was put in when it was still one parcel, but has now since been subdivided, so there may be a need for an additional commercial.
That may have to be retro?
That part may have to be done.
Got it.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, thank you. Discussion. It seems to be like this is a low-impact request. It's not going to change a lot. I think that the driveway issue is, again, a matter for the DOT. And Lynn, correct me if I'm wrong, this would be TRC?
The commercial development of this scale wouldn't normally be subject to TRC review. If the applicant requested it, we could certainly provide it, but given that many of the factors that are involved in larger-scale development really don't apply here, it would primarily fall on the developmental standards that are in the ordinance.
Quick question.
Sure.
So the buffer will have to be on the outside of the fence line, right?
It can really be either. We can work with the applicant. The fence, if I, I don't have my ordinance with me, but I believe the fence can be either inside or outside of the buffer. In some cases, if it's a solid opaque fence to six feet tall at least, that itself counts as the landscape buffer.
I just wondered if it was on outside, is it going to reduce the size of the lot when they move the fence in?
To some degree it may, because of that requirement for that 15-foot border around the property, that will take up some space.
I mean, just my own personal opinion, and this is, like I said, a personal opinion. To me, the buffer should be on the outside of the fence, so the joint and sentences don't have to look at the fence.
Mrs. Allgren, would you like to?
Well, just, also, I'll address part of that. We're not requiring the fence. They're asking, they're putting up a fence, so we don't have any requirement that says inside or outside the buffer, so we can't make them, but we'll do our best to address it with them.
Yeah.
But they do have to put the buffer.
The buffer, yes. Landscaping screening has to go into place. As Lynn said, some of the opaque fences can qualify as part of the landscaping buffer as well, but the fence that she's doing, the vinyl chain link, that would not qualify. Even if you put the little slats in it, we don't qualify that. So, but that can be on the inside or outside. I mean, it can go all the way up to the property line is the way our rules are, because we don't have any rules regarding fences.
And there's, like, so there's, and the set, is there a setback all the way around or can?
There will be a business setback, since they're against residentially-zoned property. It'll follow whatever that setback is, which I think is 30 feet for neighborhood commercial from residential property. So their actual facilities themselves would still have to be 30 feet in, so the buffer would exist within that 30-foot setback regardless.
Yeah.
So what does the ordinance say about the fence being on the property line? Can it be on the property line?
We don't have any regulations of where they place the fence, is what I'm saying.
Some places like one foot inside the property.
Yeah, but we have no regulations on where they place the fence. It's been a consternation for us.
Right. We often just recommend, from sort of a planning commonsense perspective, to place a fence six inches to one foot within your property line, just to be safe. It's a recommendation.
Thank you.
Any other comments or opinions? Then we can move to a motion.
Should we approve it?
You got to read them.
I motion to recommend approval of this request to rezon the specified parcel. The requested zoning district, based upon the consistency and reasonable determination, statements that include in the board agenda packet submitted during the rezoning presentation, as may be amended, incorporated into motion to be included in the minutes.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the request to change the zoning map and provide a recommendation accordingly to the county commissioners. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All of us opposed, like, sign. There's no opposition, so we're going ahead, going to go ahead and approve this request and send a recommendation to the county commissioners for approval.
And that meeting will be? Second meeting in January, which is the 16th. It's going to be a Tuesday due to the Martin Luther King holiday, so the meeting will be held on Tuesday, the 16th, instead of the Monday. And notices will go out in the mail again for that.
And now we have new business discussion of near-future date for continuing education board workshop.
Yeah, Clyde has come to us with a request with some information from the school government and a few other things, wants to hold a mock quadno judicial hearing set up so that everybody can get familiar with the types of evidence, testimony, and questions that may be asked, things like that. So we're going to ask you guys over the next two weeks to come up with some days in January after our next meeting, which is coming early, it's going to be the 8th. So we want to do it sometime after that meeting, but before the February meeting, and we're going to try to poll everybody for some dates and times. Staff honestly would prefer a daytime. I know, you know, that's the way the attorney, everybody's here for the day, but if y'all, we can't make it work, we do have our extra meeting allowance for that last Monday of the month that's in the evening, so just think about some days and times and see if you shoot them over to Lynn before the New Year's. And then we'll have a packet, part of the packet in January about selecting a final day and time with everybody present.
Our alternate meeting date for January would be the 22nd. That's a Monday?
I think so.
Yeah, that's the fourth Monday.
I've got my calendar here.
And if the board would like, I can send out a doodle poll with days and times, and you can select the ones that you like and the ones that you don't like, and we can kind of get a consensus.
I figured if anybody knew about holidays or things they're already doing next month, they can send us those days. That way, we wouldn't have those in the poll.
True.
Indication on how much time he needs?
I think we're looking for two to two and a half hours at most.
Okay.
At most, I would say, yeah.
But no, he didn't actually give an indication, but I wouldn't go more than that.
How many of us are constrained by work schedules, would you think?
Two.
I'd like to get at least two week notice, because I travel a lot, and I can work it in, but I think two weeks would be good where I'm working in my schedule.
If we step at the 22nd, that's plenty of time to do planning. That's a month and a half out.
Yeah.
If we do the 22nd, would you like to do?
Yeah.
Would you like to do daytime that day or do evening that day?
I'm good with daytime.
Jeff?
I want to do daytime or evening.
22nd. I got to check. I got to ski trip Lynn at some point. I got to make sure I was on it.
Yeah, check those dates, and we'll get back to Lynn before the holidays, and then we'll send something out.
Okay.
But we'll bank that as being the primary date right now. If everybody can make it, if they can't, we'll look at a few other options.
And I'll send out a doodle poll about at least times on that date, and then maybe one other alternate date, just in case.
Sounds like we can all do during the day.
Sounds like it. We would love that.
We don't have any old business on the agenda, so at this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion has been made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Okay, meeting's adjourned. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for coming.